And today is Wednesday, November the 5th, the day after the election. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
I'm David Mayby, Commissioner President.
Senator Neely, City Commissioner.
I'm City Commissioner Tidwell.
And now that the election is behind us, I would ask all of us as Americans to stand with and join us in the flag salute.
My pleasure. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now it's my pleasure to call forward Britt Tucker and the members of the High School Construction Corps. So Britt, if you'd like to come here to the microphone and let your group gather around you.
Well, if they can.
It's appropriate that this evening that we recognize you for the partners that you have been, the innovators actually that you have been in Oregon City. And so I think to give us a little background on that and why you're here and why it's important that we have you here, I'd like to turn that over to Scott Archer, our Community Services Director. Scott?
Thank you Mayor Norris and good evening City Commissioners. It's a great pleasure tonight to talk to you a little bit about the Oregon City High Schools Oregon City Construction Program. And as you can see, there's a pretty good group here from that class to represent this tonight. Just a little bit of background and then while I'm making some comments, we've got a few photos of the class and some of the projects just to kind of show a sampling of some of those projects that they've worked on. But the Oregon City Construction started in 2003 as an advanced construction class based on the concepts of community service, project management, and planning future job opportunities. Initial projects have been focused around local parks and we have been fortunate as a city to have made some early inroads and I think those are due to some of the connections that you made Mayor Norris with Britt and with his group at the high school, that they have essentially adopted some of our parks and taken on some projects that have really greatly enhanced our parks and our usability of those parks and have enhanced our community. Some of the projects that they've worked on as an all volunteer, on an all volunteer basis have included an observation deck, birdhouses, a retaining wall, and a bridge at Hillendale Park, a concrete walkway in pergolas at Wesley Lynn Park, a sand volleyball court at Hillendale Park, and refurbishing stairs and doing some other work at the swimming pool. And I think there have been some others, but those are kind of the major projects. And then right now, the class is planning for a major project this coming year, which is a picnic shelter at Wesley Lynn Park, and this is no small undertaking. And I think Britt might talk just a little bit about that, but that will be their biggest project to date. The participants of this class are high school students led by the instructor Britt. They work on these projects basically from concept to design to material runoff, obtaining donations, and then to actual onsite implementation and construction. It's an A to Z program. We've worked closely with the group and I can tell you that they are just a great, it's a great program. They come to the staff and then they come through PRAK and they present their ideas and they ask for support and approval and move forward through the process. And they come in their staff uniforms and they present themselves very, very well, very professionally and there's just a lot to be said about that. The product of their time, efforts, and skills are a great benefit to the community and they provide assets to our park system that we may otherwise not be able to have funded. I would, I've not done this, I've not calculated what the value of their projects have been, but if we did, I would venture that it's in the tens of thousands of dollars worth of time, material, labor, et cetera. What I'd also like to tell you is this year, we nominated the class for, through the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association, which is our state professional association, for a voluntary service award. And I'm pleased to tell you that in September, just this last, a little over a month ago, at our annual State Parks Conference in Bend, where we have over 300 professionals from around the state attend, that they were the recipient of one of only two voluntary service awards given away in the state of Oregon this year for all of their outstanding work that they've done for Oregon City. And I've got that award here. Britt, it's Britt's award, well, it's the class's award, but he lent it to me so I could show it off and I'll pass that up to you so you can take a look at that.
Congratulations.
I'm just very, very pleased with that. And Britt and his wife were able to come to the conference and accept that award on behalf of the class and it was a high honor. So again, we're just very pleased and we thought that, you know, with them being the recipient of this award and having worked with the group for the past several years, just felt that it was probably overdue that they would come and we would officially recognize them as a city and thank them for all that they've done. And I would especially like to say on behalf of the staff and the Community Services Department, a big debt of gratitude and thanks to Britt and to all the students, both in this current class as well as in the past. This is not a representation of everyone because it changes from year to year as students move on. So there's probably a few dozen more kids that aren't even represented here tonight that have done great service for our community in the past. And with that, Mayor, I believe you have something to present to Britt and the class as well.
I do. And in fact, we're a little bit familiar with you because you have presented successfully to the Oregon City Metro Enhancement Program and I believe we gave you two grants, two years in a row. And I believe you may have been the highest ranking project both years because you've done a great job of putting that together. And I have been honored each spring to be invited to your class to see what your aspirations for the future are, to learn about how you figured out the dimensions, the concrete, how you have gotten the steel together, how you put projects together and learn practical skills. Plus, I believe you've designed your own shirts and hats and your logo, your mission statement. This is a class that understands that professional-looking person gives you a leg up in the job market and you certainly look professional to me. So in honor though of the work that you have done and that volunteer contributions, not all volunteer, but most of it, in recognition and appreciation of the Oregon City Construction Corps, Oregon City High School for their outstanding volunteer efforts in greatly enhancing and improving Oregon City Parks through numerous projects, recognized this November 5th, 2008 by Oregon City Mayor Alice Norris, the Oregon City Commission, Oregon City Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Oregon City Community Services Department. And from a grateful community, we say thank you. Now I'll let you say a few words.
Oh dear, I'm overwhelmed here. First of all, I can't tell you how proud I am of my students for taking this on. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of effort. I'm really big on trying to teach them to take pride in their community and thank the community for letting us do this, I really appreciate it. I think they would all agree that, and I've learned this from that conference, that the health of a community's open spaces and the kids being involved with that is very, very important to the health of the community. So I can't tell you how happy I am to be involved with the city, thank you very much. And thank you for this honor and it's my students' honor, not mine. And for all of the years past, we have kids that have worked on this from the very beginning and it's grown and I hope that it will continue to grow. We have pictures of the, if you'd like to see of what we're up to for this year, although it's quite a daunting prospect, but we plan on finishing it, I hope.
Right.
But it should be a very beautiful, again, the patios, everything has been designed. We intend on putting nice product into the community. The kids are very proud of this and I hope that they will be able to be proud of this for many years to come. So thank you, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's for them, it truly is for my students.
Commissioner Tidwell, how's the comment?
I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, I thank you for coming, all of you, this evening. I think this is fantastic what you're doing. I live in a home here in Oregon City that was built by Oregon City High School in 1979. And so are you guys, or any, it was when they were going through a construction phase of they had a high school course that you could take there and you actually build a house?
Really?
I don't think they've done that. Yes, really.
Yes, they did that.
I don't think that they've done that for quite a few years.
That's the 1980s.
Are you guys ever going to pursue maybe doing that or trying to go about getting the dollars to do something like that?
Well, I'm, the public service and having the kids involved in these public spaces to me is even more important than actually building. I've been involved with that kind of a process before.
Because I had a few repairs that needed.
Oh, I see. Well, that's another story, we'll talk.
Okay.
But I can't, having the kids and having the kids involved in these spaces and being responsible to be there and to improve these public spaces is really, really big in my estimation. So like I said, the house, that's one thing, but to have them be proud of these projects, I just think that their involvement in the city parks has probably diminished vandalism, I would think. I wouldn't want to be anybody vandalizing these projects if my kids were around personally, but not that they would do anything on board, but at any rate, they take great pride in this and I think that is a really healthy, healthy thing as a teenager.
Commissioner Mayby.
Yeah, to me, the advantage of these being public works is, and I know it seems like a long way away, but when you have kids your age, you can go and, or even, you know, when they're growing up and say, "I built that, this is something I did for the community." And, you know, some of them are structures that aren't designed to be, I mean, a volleyball court may not be there in 20 years, but, you know, the bridges you've built, some of the pergolas, this picnic shelter.
It's not going to go anywhere.
Yeah, well, but you're designing them so well that they're not going to fall apart, they're not going to rot, they're going to be there in a community asset for, at the very least, your kids. And, you know, if we keep them maintained like we should, maybe, you know, your grandkids and on. So, I mean, these are real substantial product and definitely something to be proud of and I'm definitely proud of all of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, we'll see you.
Thank you, thank you so much and thank you for coming, guys, this is, girls, sorry.
Y'all.
Y'all, that's what I meant. Thank you so much, I'm very proud of this association with the city and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't want to go without that. You bet. Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address us for up to three minutes on a topic that is a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who has signed up to do that?
Madam Mayor, there is no one who's signed up at this time. We have lots of her other comments, but not citizen.
We do have people who come for other agenda items, so we'll get to that, thank you. Yes, Commissioner West?
Is there something wrong with the mics tonight or Mayor Norris's mic is?
It's going up and down, yeah.
We're getting a lot of feedback up here.
Thank you.
Okay, as we are fixing the microphones, let's look at the agenda this evening. Are there any, well, first of all, item 7C has been polled, this is the John Storm Debris Deflection Boom, and that will come back to us, I believe, in two weeks as it's getting refined. Are there any other items on the consent, Jen, you'd like, 8B, like polled, minutes?
Excuse me? D.
D.
Yes.
Oh, the Department of State Landslaves, okay. Any others?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Which one?
E and F.
Both together?
Together.
Okay. Separate consideration or?
No, both together.
All right, with that, we will take the agenda in the order in which it is listed. First of all, we have a public hearing. This is a quasi-judicial land use hearing, which the rules of the state of Oregon and the Oregon City Municipal Code apply. This is an appeal of Planning File SP 0804 Revised. This is an appeal of a staff approval on a remand of a two-family attached residential structure site plan and design review in the MUC-1 Mixed Use Corridor Zone District. So before we get started, I would like to ask our attorney to give us the regulations that apply to our hearing this evening, our appeal. Thank you. Mr. Kabaisman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's members of the commission. You know, as the mayor stated, this is a quasi-judicial land use hearing which is conducted in accordance with our, the statute and our code and that requires at the beginning of the hearing that I announce that the applicable substantive criteria were provided in the staff report that was made available seven days in advance of the hearing and those can be listed if you'd like. I would ask that all testimony, arguments, and evidence be directed towards those criteria, other criteria in the plan or land use regulations that you believe apply to this application, and failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to any proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. With that, I would ask if any members of the commission have any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflict of interest that they'd like to declare.
I do say, drive by.
Same.
Any objections or challenges from the audience? Seeing none, we proceed with the staff report.
Thank you for that. Before we begin, I would like to outline the process that we'll be using for the public hearing. It did not make it into the agenda, but we will hear a report from our staff and then have an opportunity for the appellant to make their appeal. Then that's 10 minutes, then we'll have 10 minutes for the, we don't have an applicant. Who's the applicant?
The applicant is not present tonight. They have an engagement and let me know ahead of time, his wife is available.
The applicant is here.
We have the owner's wife and the applicant's wife is here tonight.
Okay, so we have 10 minutes for the applicant and then five minutes for any recognized neighborhood association, three minutes then for individual testimony, this can be pro, con, or neutral, and then five minutes for the rebuttal. Then we will close the public hearing and we will have an opportunity to deliberate among ourselves and make a decision this evening. So with that, I would like to turn that over to Pete Walter, who will, from the Planning Department, to walk us through the staff report.
Thank you Mayor Norris and good evening Commissioners. The item before you is an appeal of a planning decision to approve a two-family attached dwelling in the mixed-use corridor district. Two-family attached dwellings, also known as duplexes, are in a permitted use in this zone district, which requires site plan and design review, which is a type-two land use review and decision. The, this is the second appeal. The appellant's name is Ms. Kathy Lutz and they're appealing the site plan and design review application, SP 0804. The city commission initially reviewed this site plan. There was a previous appeal, that was on August 6, 2008. The city commission remanded the site plan back to the planning staff and the applicant has revised the site plan to provide two separate garages in the duplex. Initially, there was a tandem garage, which is a garage where one car is directly behind the other in the garage. The proposal is the same essentially, except for that one change to the floor plan of the building. So it's gone from a tandem garage to two separate garages. The footprint of the building is identical, the setbacks of the building are identical. And the proposed development is located near the corner of Pearl Street and Myrtle The staff report outlines the criteria and how the application met those criteria. And one of the additional conditions of approval that has been recommended by the city engineer with respect to improvements on the street is that the applicant provide a paved parking area on the street within the right-of-way and that will be directly in front of the garages and would connect to the existing pavement on Myrtle Street. Want to note that Myrtle Street is an area where the city holds 60 feet of right-of-way, but there is only 20 feet of current pavement. And as development occurs in the mixed-use corridor, which is incremental, those developments are required to bring the streets up to our transportation system plan standards. And in this case, the applicant is required to provide cash in lieu of those improvements because we're not sure when Myrtle Street will be fully developed. And until such time as Myrtle Street does develop, we're requiring an engineering estimate that meets our street standards and a cost estimate for the, cost estimate and cash in lieu be deposited for those future improvements. We're also providing a condition of approval that requires a non-remonstrance agreement. And this is an agreement that says that, requires that a person not remonstrate against a local improvement district to make future street improvements if that is necessary in the future. It's a standard condition of approval that's attached to all land use approvals. The appellant, Kathy Lutz, has submitted written comments during the 14-day public comment period for the revised site plan and therefore has standing to appeal and submitted an appeal within 10 days of the notice of decision. The Assistant City Attorney has prepared a memorandum in your packet, and it's Attachment A, which details the issues that were raised and the relevant findings. And I'll briefly summarize that memorandum. The relevant facts are as follows. The original appeal on this application for a two-story duplex was before the commission on August 6. At the August hearing, most of the testimony in opposition to the application was directed at the lack of on-street parking and off-street parking and an insufficient turnaround at the end of Myrtle Street. After the hearing closed, Commissioner Neely and Ms. Crashour discussed the possibility of creating a local improvement district to widen the street and/or limiting on-street parking to allow for an adequate turnaround. Regarding the parking, Commissioner Mayby expressed concerns about interpreting the two off-street parking space requirements to allow a tandem garage configuration. And after a short recess, Mr. Cunningham requested an opportunity to revise the site plan to address that concern and provide.
Just to clarify this for the record.
Commissioner Mayby?
Yes, sir.
The concern was actually valid because it was in violation of our code, as discovered later.
Right.
But not at the time of the review. So it was, it wasn't just a concern, it was a violation that needed to be corrected.
Correct, there'd be an unobstructed parking space, that's correct. And given that the record was closed, the commission voted to remand the case back to staff. Applicants submitted the revised site plan for, with separate garages for each unit. And as I've said, the only change is to the internal room layout on the first floor and those accesses onto Myrtle Avenue. The appeal raises the issue of fire access, the need for a traffic analysis, the proximity of the duplex to other structures, interference with access to light, and impacts from construction in a drain field. After considering these issues, on September 19, 2008, the Community Development Director issued a decision concluding that none of the comments received indicate that a particular approval criterion has not been met or that it cannot be met through compliance with the conditions of approval. And this appeal followed. The first issue that the commission should answer is the scope of consideration of the issues that are on appeal. As we summarized above, although the commission's deliberation during the first appeal was limited to the issues of parking and road accessibility, it does not appear that the commission's decision specifically limited staff review on remand to those issues. Subsequently, staff is recommending that the commission not limit its consideration to those issues, i.e. the parking issues only identified by during its initial review on August 6. So essentially, the record was reopened and all issues were available for consideration again with the revised site plan. And the second issue relates to the commission's obligation to limit its review on appeal to those issues raised in the comments below. Staff has reviewed the record and in particular, the September 2 and September 5 letter from the appellant and concluded that the following issues were not raised during the comment period provided for the revised application. These include, one, a need for professional blueprints, two, a need for a grading plan, three, the location of garbage cans when located on the street for pickup. Staff recommends the finding that these issues were not raised during the public comment period and therefore cannot be considered further. With regard to the issues that were raised during the public comment period, the off-site parking is the first issue that we'll discuss. The appellant has re-raised her objection to staff's finding that the separate garages will provide adequate parking. The appellant argues that staff failed to consider all of the evidence in that the garages would be used for storage and that even with the two off-street parking spaces, visitor parking has not been adequately considered. The code requires that a single-family attached dwelling provide one space per unit and unobstructed. And that provision has been met with the revision to the site plan. With regard to off-street parking spaces, we're going to talk about that as a condition of approval separately. Appellant argued that the city staff failed to consider the difficulty of turning around on Myrtle Street due to the limited pavement width. The right-of-way situation with the city owning 60 feet of right-of-way with only 20 feet of pavement, there is room for the appellant, the applicant to, or tenants within the building to back out into the right-of-way from there. It is a cul-de-sac dead-end street and there is not any through traffic other than local traffic. The fire department, fire marshal has looked at that street and concluded that it meets the fire code in, with regard to there being a fire hydrant that is 70 feet from the property line and it is not so long that it requires there be additional fire protection, such as a sprinkler system in there. It is about a 250-long, foot-long piece of right-of-way. And that email is in your packet. Applicants are only required to improve street conditions directly adjacent to their property and subsequently they are required to provide an engineering estimate for the street improvement costs of curb gutter and pavement and a half-street improvement adjacent to the frontage. Additionally, the city engineer has recommended that the city commission require the following additional condition of approval for on-street parking, which would consist of an on-street parking pad along the development frontage. Parking pad shall transition to the north and south at a two-to-one taper and to ensure matching grade and travel surfaces. And to ensure matching grade and travel surface integrity, the extent of the paving within Myrtle Street shall be coordinated, coordinated with the Oregon City Public Works Department, but will not exceed a grind and inlay to centerline plus 10 feet.
In English, then.
The grind and inlay.
I defer to the city engineer on what that refers, means.
What it means is that we're asking them, we're not asking them to put in a curb and gutter and sidewalk at this time, but we are asking them to pave to the property line. And, um, then we, we want to make sure that transitions properly and that they, um, provide a good wearing surface on Myrtle, Myrtle Street along their frontage. And until we get out there and start dealing with the actual construction and the grades of the driveways, et cetera, we won't know exactly, um, how all the matching is going to work with the new paving and property. So that we just want them to coordinate with us when they get out there. And we'll ask them, depending on the pavement condition, um, we'll ask them to improve the surface of Myrtle, a maximum of half-street plus 10 feet, which is our standard for, um, local development.
Commissioner Mayby, more?
Um, so half-street plus 10 feet is the entire width of the street if it's only 20 feet wide.
It could be.
Um, but only straight in front of their property.
Correct, with a taper to the north and south so you can, when you're driving onto their little parking, parking, um, pad, you'll be able to transition without getting into the gravel.
Okay, yeah, that was the, the two-to-one taper, I mean, so it's going to look like a chevron or, and is it going to open towards their property or towards the street?
It will, um, the, if you start with this narrow piece of pavement, it will widen towards their property and away from their property on the north end.
And opens towards the street.
Okay, so, so then, but the, the end of that taper will still be within their property line?
No, it'll be to the north and south of their property line.
So they'll be encroaching on the adjacent property lines-
It'll be within the right-of-way.
Okay. But, but it'll be, it'll be, it'll be in the right-of-way, so that, that's our stuff. Uh, but it will be changing what's going on with the property lines next to the, or the properties next to them.
Minimally, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's complete the staff report.
And there's also, there was also a tree out there that we want to work around if we can. We're not sure how all that's going to work out.
Okay, maybe we complete the staff report then, have questions?
Yeah, the final two issues are with respect to building height and setbacks and flooding and drainage. Uh, the submitted flight, site plan is for a two-story building that's 25 feet tall, um, not a three-story building that was alluded to by the appellant. Um, the, the zone that they are in allows for a 45-foot height limit, however, that's not what the applicant's proposed. Um, setbacks in that zone, uh, there are no setbacks in the mixed-use corridor zone, however, there are landscaping requirements for 20% of the site. And in this case, the applicant is providing five-foot setbacks from the property line for the building, which will allow them to meet that 20% landscaping requirement on either side of the property, of the building. And provide separation between the property line and the adjacent neighbor's home. Um, flooding and drainage, um, we have a condition of approval that, um, requires that their drainage meet our drainage standards, which is, uh, allows for the use of roof drains, French drains, and other approved drainage mechanisms for the building. Those are usually reviewed at the time of building permit review. Um, and a condition is imposed to ensure that this standard is met. With regard to the possible presence of a septic drain field under the site, we had personal communication with Clackamas County Soils Division staff to determine whether or not there is a drain field present on the site. Um, they indicated that there's no record of a septic drain field on the site and their records go back to 1974. So if there is one on the site, um, it has been abandoned or decommissioned long enough that it would not constitute a hazard. However, during the process of building permit review, if there's any evidence of that uncovered during excavation or grading, which would be minimal for a building in, on the site, uh, they would be required to remediate that or decommission it so that it's not a hazard. Um, so those were the issues that were raised on appeal during the public, uh, not on appeal, but during the public comment period. Um, the other issues with respect to the need for professional blueprints, the plan and timing for installing roadway improvements and pedestrian improvements, the need for a grading plan, and the number of garbage cans that were not issues that were raised during the public comment period. And should the commission decide to consider those issues, uh, we've provided a response in your, um, in your, in the memorandum. Essentially, an applicant is not required to provide a professional architectural or engineering blueprint at the preliminary site plan review stage, although they are required to provide those to the building staff during building permit review stamped by an engineer or an architect. We require at the planning stage that there be a scaled site plan, that it be accurate and that reflect where the property lines and the boundaries of the property are and that those dimensions are accurate. And that's what's been provided in the site plan. Um, and, uh, with respect to the use of the garages and garbage cans, um, those are not land use approval criteria. Um, and finally, the grading plan, um-
You said those are not?
No. Um, how an applicant or, uh, tenant chooses to use their garage space is not a land use approval criterion. So they need to provide the off-street parking. Um, if it becomes a situation where their use of that garage space precludes them from using it as a parking space and it becomes a, a nuisance, then the code enforcement division would be-
Let me ask you about that since you're on that now. We had an issue with that the last time we had this. You have two, uh, two-dwelling unit and two-car garage, but narrow enough for one car at a time to be in there. So I think we were talking about one car being, could be in there and another car was parked there and they couldn't get out, et cetera. But it says here in this that that garage is now, uh, is going to be officially used for storage. That's the land, is that right?
No, no.
The garages would be used for storage and that even with the two off-street parking spaces, visitor parking has, where, why am I reading that wrong? Why am I getting the wrong idea with that?
I think that's the appellant's assertion.
Yeah, but didn't we say something about that that was going to be, okay, I forget it. All right. Fusion kicking in. Move along.
It's okay, perfectly all right. Um, a standard parking space in our code is eight-and-a-half feet wide minimum by 18-foot long minimum, so, yeah, okay. Okay. Um, so in conclusion, um, staff feels that the conditions of approval that we're recommending are sufficient to make sure that this application meets our site plan and design review criteria and, uh, resolve any issues with respect to off-street and on-street parking. Um, we're ready to answer any questions you have with respect to this. Uh, however, we're recommending that, um, the decision to approve the site plan and design review application be upheld.
Do you have any questions that you need to ask before the public hearing that might not be answered? Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I wanted to come to the parking pad. If I understood you correctly, this parking pad would extend in front of the two garages? Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, so I guess you have an area there that it could accommodate up to three cars if I look at this correctly. You've got 14 feet between the, uh, between the garages there. Is it? It's probably Chief of Police, uh, question, but I know if I've got a car in front of my driveway, I can call in. But the decision as to whether it's illegally parked is really a question of the resident making the complaint. Resident can, can park in front of their own driveway, is that right?
I'm not a, I don't know. That, that's not a zoning question.
Chief?
Yeah, I'm wondering.
Yeah, I think you can park it for your own driveway.
Okay.
You have to call and complain about yourself, basically.
Well, that's, that's the point I made. It, it isn't a law that would normally be enforced unless you got a complaint from the resident.
Right, because you get a complaint with, yeah.
Okay.
Blocking my driveway and-
Right.
Which would generally cite him. Oh, it's bad too, but-
Put a weight for doing that.
Never had anybody call and say that-
No, that's, that's, you're answering the question, I think, okay. So essentially, there's spa, there's space there for three cars for residential use, essentially.
Yes, um, there is, is some concern with respect to the, uh, the distance between the driveways when they're, when that parking pad goes in. However, that's something that would be up to the discretion of the tenants to sort out amongst themselves. Um, it's about a 14-foot space between where those garage doors are. Um, however, that's, uh, an on-street parking situation.
Okay. Thank you, let's hold your questions and we'll do the public hearing. And if they're not answered, we'll get opportunity for that immediately following. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to open the public hearing. And first of all, we'll have asked the appellant to come forward.
I'm Kathy Lutz, I live on Myrtle Street. And bringing up the subject of parking again, with two people or even one person parking in a, on the parking pad, um, that would make, give a, that would give a pretty good, um, I'm trying to say, that, that would give a, uh, let the, let the tenants use the garages for storage instead of parking. Because why would you want to pull into a, pull into a garage when you can park right out front? The second thing is, um, the right-of-way, the city holds right-of-way of, of 60 feet and that there's only 20 feet. That seems like a, a big thing for the city to, to, to fix or even, even the neighborhood to fix. Um, and it seems like, also too, it seems like there's, there might be two lots there, but they're over, they're overlapping onto the other lot. There's a house, there's a house built there with a, a back porch. And if they built another structure there, that would take away half their yard. And so it seems like they would be overlapping on their, um, building or that property. And there is a drainage problem. Uh, we, uh, my basement floods every year and my neighbor's basement floods every year and they're building downhill from us. So it would seem that they'd, that they'd get most of the water. Right now, we're using sump pumps to get the water out, we do every year. And I don't know what the city proposes to do in that case. It seems like they'd be spending a lot of money to fix two other homes besides, um, the one that's being built as far as, um, water runoff. So that's where the, um, flooding, flooding comes in. And that's about all I have to say right at this time. Yeah, and the park, the parking situation seems like a bottleneck effect. It'll be narrow, narrow in the middle and then wider the farther you go up the street. And that really doesn't seem like a very good idea. That's it.
Thank you.
Third question, if I may.
Kathy, if you would stay, there's a question for you. Commissioner Neely?
You mentioned flooding. Uh, do you have a basement that is flooding into or is it something else?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Basement.
Into your basement, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the applicant, 10 minutes, please, come forward. I didn't, um, I think, yeah, talk about, uh, rules for, um, public testimony. When you come forward, we ask that, um, you give your name and the city in which you live. And the reason we don't ask for your address like we used to is that, um, we, we want to prevent against identity theft of your name from being in the minutes. So if you print legibly, then that will suffice. So with that, please come ahead.
This is Dean Cunningham, Oregon City. Hi, just trying to, uh, whatever problems we have, we can just try to work it out and redesign it if we need to, but, uh, if there's any problems or concerns, we can try to address it, but I don't see any problems or concerns with the, for the revised plan.
Okay, Commissioner Neely, question?
Are these units going to have a basement associated with it, ground floor?
No, just the ground floor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mayby?
Uh, I'm not sure whether this is for you or for, uh, Mr. Drenlaw, but, um, at, at this point, what, what we've been given shows that, uh, where you went to build is on a lot that looks like it's 100 by 100 and it includes the WB parking lot and, um, I mean, all we've got for record is one lot, um, with a house, half of the WB parking lot and, uh, other items. So I haven't seen a proposal to subdivide or anything like that, is-
Uh, they already did a site, uh, lot, lot line adjustment. They flipped the line that went through the WB parking lot, flipped it back. So there's two lots where the one existing house is and then the proposed billing lot. And the WB is all one whole lot and their parking lot's all one whole lot. So I don't know what picture there is right now.
On page 31 is the drawing. Shows the line adjustments.
What page is that?
Page 31.
Yeah, I don't-
Are there further questions about that?
Well, okay, so you're going to end up with, uh, rounding the numbers, a 42 by 50-foot lot?
Yeah.
With a little taper in?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's, that would have been kind of useful to have superimposed on the aerial that we have in here. Um, but, so that's a proposed lot, is that actually-
That's the lot, that's the lot and then the-
Okay, so, so our, our records just haven't caught up with the new lines? I'm looking at Dan first.
This is a, it's, this aerial photograph is taking hold of the plot.
Okay, and that's-
It's already made.
Okay.
It's finished, okay.
Okay, now, your questions for you?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others? All right, next, um, we'll open the testimony to those who are pro, con, and neutral. And first of all, may I ask if there are any neighborhood associations that, or are there other organizations that wish to testify this evening? Seeing none, then are there any citizens? I have one, Cindy Sanders. Please come forward.
Hi, I live on Myrtle Street.
Please, please introduce yourself.
I'm Cindy Sanders, I live on Myrtle Street. Um, my first, um, this may not come in my, this isn't exactly, I think, what you expected, but I wanted to ask you why, um, the letter that I wrote on September 5th, that it's stamped by the city that was supposed to go in with Ms. Lutz's appeal, never got, um, put in there. Um, and because it didn't get put in there, I would like to have a chance to read it out loud so that everyone hears it and not have that count as part of my time. Is that fair?
Just, let's make sure that our attorney clears that.
Pete?
Pete.
Pete.
Mr. Walter.
Hmm, okay. No, I haven't seen this letter before. It's stamped as accepted by the city, but it's not in the record.
I believe it should be entered in the record.
So then it's appropriate-
To the extent it was submitted to the city-
Yeah, it was submitted in the appropriate time period, so therefore you, you may indeed read the letter to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
To the Oregon City Planning Commission, I am a resident at 310 Myrtle Street and have issues with file number blah, 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 in which applicant Dean Cunningham wishes to construct a two-family dwelling across the street from my home. First of all, the last partition plat map I have seen, number 2007-162, shows the supposed tax lot. I say supposed as in response to what Mr. Mayby commented on early because I've never seen a true picture of this. Um, tax lot as being 50.18 by 39.84 feet. I don't understand how a lot that small can support one family, let alone two. The rudimentary drawing of a house plan was roughly 40 by 30- a house plan was roughly 40 by 38 feet. We, the neighborhood and people who signed the appeal made by Ms. Lutz, would like to see a plan as to how this duplex is supposed to sit on the lot in question. Secondly, I have issue with the traffic problem, which was also addressed in Ms. Lutz's appeal. She has already shown proof of the many people whose cars have been damaged by the traffic problem. My driveway is jokingly called the turnaround because so many people use it to turn around after missing the dead-end sign at the end of the street. My concern is not only with the amount of vehicle damage we have had, and we have had hit-and-run vehicle damage I'm talking about, which she has in this report. There are a number of children in the neighborhood who generate bicycle and skateboard traffic. I worry about their safety already, but if we have a two-family dwelling dumping at least four more cars, that's two per family, onto Myrtle Street, there will be a definite increase in the number of vehicles damaged, so the chances of children being hit is greatly increased. Now, I've served this community for 30 years as an RN, and so I tend to be fairly concerned about safety. I also have my two grandchildren living with me, and I am raising them in this home, so they leave my property and come back and forth every day on this street. We have children and adults, much pedestrian traffic from up the hill on Pleasant Avenue. Are you familiar with that street?
Uh huh.
There's a whole little neighborhood up there, and they all walk down through an empty lot onto Pearl Street to go to WB Market, through the lot that they want to build on, which, that's fine. I don't, I wouldn't mind stopping with pedestrian traffic, but the point is, it does exist, and children are up and down, and they feel safe on that street because it's a dead-end street. It's not really safe. If cars are being hit, then it's not a safe street. That's how I see it. So as a, as a nurse, I'm the nurse of the neighborhood, so my neighbors will attest to you that I'm, I'm going to be the one picking up the pieces. So I'm very concerned about that. And I have an idea. Wouldn't it make more sense, if you insist on cramming a duplex on a tiny lot like that, that Mr. Cunningham should ask for an easement between 326 Pearl Street and the WB Market? That way, the families living there would not be adding unsafe traffic issues to Myrtle Street. I would appreciate if you would add my comments to any others in Ms. Lutz's appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would give a copy of the letter to our attorney, then it will be added to the record.
Pardon me?
Is that the extent of your testimony there?
You still have time. If you wish to make comments beyond...
Well, the easement idea, I would like you to consider that, because WB, I've lived there for 15 years. I've never seen that parking lot full. So I don't understand why, if we have to, I know we're going to have development. We all understand that. We don't like it sometimes, but if this ends up going through and they do build on that property, then why can't the cars dump out the other direction? Then we don't have more dumping onto this tiny little street that we have. We already have three houses right in a row that are Pearl Street addresses, whose driveways come, who enter their homes from Myrtle Street. Okay, that's the 326, then across the street, and then there's an easement going over to Kay Schmidt's house, who is next door. Those three Pearl Street addresses enter from Myrtle Street. So now we get a duplex, which is going to add at least four more cars statistically, right? Why can't they use that strip of WB, you know, get an easement, pull in from the other direction? It makes much more sense to me. So that's what I want to address, the safety, the traffic. It's, it's a crazy little street. There shouldn't be the amount of traffic there is on that street, but in reality, it is there.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Well, it's going to follow up, and it's going to be, well, she might want to sit there.
Oh, okay, great. Go ahead.
In terms of an easement, a property owner, I think, is seeking easement through a public right-of-way. If we were going to put in an easement, request an easement, would it have to go from one public right-of-way to another? That is, would it have to go from Myrtle all the way to Mulalla, as opposed to Myrtle to a piece of private property? I understand that. So, so I mean, are we in a position to request an easement, other than that, that would take us from one public right-of-way to another public right-of-way? I mean, that's the only time I've seen us require easements.
You mean authority to do that?
Yeah, in terms of authority.
I don't know how we can require somebody to get a private easement for an alternative access, if the access that's already there is legal.
Okay, thank you. Are there others who wish to testify this evening?
Hi, I'm Penny White, and I live in Oregon City, and I am part-owner of the WB Market and the lot that we are discussing. There is no way we could do an easement there because there's big trucks coming in, and to have people walking through there, that's just more dangerous to me, for children to get hit by big trucks pulling through. You know, we got semis coming through that make deliveries. Plus, I guess you already, we already discussed the issue of that property line. She misunderstood. That does take out part of the property of the other house, which has already been, already changed. So the house, you know, the lot there. But my main concern was, you know, I, I feel like they don't want this to go through because they use that lot for a turnaround, for their kids to play, and whatever, you know, other issues. I know that Kathy Lutz parks in front of that lot all the time, and she has admitted in her own letter, she doesn't use her garage for parking. She uses her garage for storage. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any final comments? Is that permissible? Yes, just a second. We need to have a really important...
The appellant is entitled to rebut. To the extent you were to allow another person to read, to provide additional testimony, the applicant would get another chance to come back again. So it's within your discretion to let her come, but it would conceivably add more to the process.
It's your desire.
Well, I, I think, I think when the rebuttal came forward, it was actually part of the regular public testimony. That is, you had not asked for rebuttal yet.
No, I had not.
So I think, in that case, I think you're probably able to bring her in, because you really haven't requested the rebuttal, even though we got a rebut.
I apologize. I assumed it was. You're right, there hadn't been a call for rebuttal.
So I think she could come back.
Yes, okay. Yeah, well, it was a different person, so that's why I wasn't certain that that was a, not just public testimony. Okay, yes, please come forward.
I think a lot of what I'm going to say really doesn't have to do with land use. It has to do with the city codes, but I want to address her comment that the reason we don't want something built there is because we use that. WB has made it clear all along that we may not use that for parking, and people, I have, I, like I said, I've lived there. It's right across the street from me. And people do park there for short periods of time. I've seen that, you know, maybe people that don't know. As far as Ms. Lutz parking in that, no, that doesn't happen. But however, they're, they put a dumpster that the market store, we, that piece of property is ugly, okay? We, the hole to that corner, WB owns it. It is ugly. They need to rip the other house down and then put a really nice duplex on there, and we wouldn't have a problem. Then it would improve the looks of our neighborhood. Right now, they don't keep up that property. It looks like one little match would set it off. It's a rodent trap. They put a dumpster on that little pad that, this, the lot that they want to build on now, and it took us two years to get that off there. We had the city come out time and time and time again. It smelled like rotting flesh. We couldn't go out and barbecue in our yards. Finally, one day, I got so mad because I walked out my door, took a deep breath in, and sucked in the smell of dead flesh. And I stomped over to WB, and I told Ray or Russ, I don't remember which one it was, that if they didn't get it off of there, that I was going to cause a really big stink, and they would be really sorry. And evidently, he believed me, because he did finally get it off of there. But this is what we've been dealing with, with that piece of property. If you were to go look at it, you would see that the side that Ms. Lutz lives on is always kept trimmed and neat, because she and, and her significant other keep it up that way. The side that WB owns looks like trash constantly, and even if the city makes them go cut it back, they leave it and they don't clean it up. It's a mess. So that's what I'm rebudding. I don't like to hear those kind of comments when they don't live in our neighborhood. They're not going to live in our neighborhood. This is probably a rental. And so I would love to see something pretty go in there, but we want to make sure it's done properly and that things are done by the rules.
Thank you. The opportunity for the applicant to rebut? This is the applicant, the applicant's...
Hi, yeah, we are trying to improve that little piece of property, and I do believe...
Just state your name one more time.
Dean Cunningham, Oregon City. I do believe a new duplex would look a lot better than any, anything that's there right now. I'm, I will be the owner and not the WB, so I don't, I don't think, I'm not owner of any adjacent properties around there, so I don't think I can be responsible for anybody else's properties. But I, I can't see a new duplex being an eyesore in that neighborhood, if that's what anybody's trying to say, so.
Questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
That concludes our public hearing. And now is an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions and deliberate. Commissioner West. Is that okay, Doug?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, I had just a couple things. One is, I'm hearing how the, your cars are all getting dinged at the end of the turnaround, and does staff have any suggestion to mitigate how that could help at this point? So that's one thing. I don't know if there's anything that they can do legally, homeowners to, so, just a suggestion, so that's one thing. But the other thing is, is if the pavement that they on, yeah, the on, the on-street parking is in the public right-of-way, can you regulate that so that just the duplex renters use that, or can anybody use it? Because it is in the public right-of-way. And that, that's one question. Okay, two. Third is, we're asking for payment from this gentleman in lieu of doing the sidewalks, yet we are asking him to do this paved piece. So is the fee that we're asking him to contribute to the sidewalks and curbs down the road commensurate with him doing the extra, going the extra mile on adding the on-street paved piece there? Three of them.
Well, the first, the first issue with the ding cars has nothing to do with the hearing tonight.
Okay.
The second issue about, what was the second one?
Oh, who can control the parking?
Anybody can park in the public right-of-way.
So this gentleman or person is building this, or there's a requirement for them, but really, it's public right-of-way, and anybody can park in that street?
Public right-of-way.
Okay?
Yep.
That's...
Basically talking about the chief's side. And you take, it would be there, but if somebody took initiative with it, correct?
No. Well, anybody could...
Can you restrict parking? You don't really restrict two parks. You restrict time frame, things like that.
Yeah, but you can't restrict two parks there.
Right.
So he's paying for it for perhaps his neighbors to park there, perhaps. And then so is the fee commensurate for, because you're asking to not curb and gutter and sidewalk now, and then you're, but you're also asking this person to do this parking strip, so is it commensurate?
Well, we, our standard for development improvements to the right-of-way includes frontage improvements, including sidewalk, curb and gutter, and asphalt. In this case, really, because the duplex is up to the right-of-way, because of the, because of the setback standards in the zone, it, this, the asphalt really is going to be in the future sidewalk space. And I guess there'd be a question for the city attorney, whether or not, because they still, we would have had them meet the standard if we were, if it made sense to build a sidewalk in front of it.
Yeah, for the whole block, yeah.
Which it doesn't.
Right. And I certainly don't see any issue in, in terms of, I assume you're heading towards a proportionality and...
Yes.
I, certainly none has been raised, and I don't see one, you know, the typical requirement to improve the street is more as, than it would be to just provide the asphalt parking pad. So I don't believe there's, there's an issue.
Oh, I was just checking, so you didn't have to do, you know...
He's actually...
Paid at both ends there, up front and down the road.
Good point.
That's it.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mayby?
Well, she stole my thunder on the, on the mitigation. And that basically is, the question is, they are putting down X amount of dollars' worth of asphalt. Is their overall fee being reduced by that X amount of dollars of asphalt?
We hadn't planned on that. They will not, they'll probably be saving money on their pavement section, because they'll just be doing a melon, a melon inlay, and we won't be asking them to build an entirely new pavement section out there. So we could look at how the dollars work out. I mean, I'd be happy to do that, to make sure they're not paying too much. But I think it'll end up being pretty much a wash.
Well, I'm just, you know, if it was just, now, as we've done in some other developments, the people haven't had to do anything other than just write a check for the amount, and their gravel driveway just attaches to wherever the street is. We're now, you know, we're, it's a good thing that we're at least starting to widen the pavement, for one thing, so that everybody in the neighborhood understands where, where, you know, the width of our right-of-way goes to. But, you know, now that he's putting down even an inch of asphalt, you know, yeah, he's saving a little money now, but, and he's writing a check for today's values instead of 2010, or whatever the case may be. It just seems appropriate that, you know, if it was being paved today, here's the value minus what's already been put out. It might be de minimis and easier to just, you know, and they might say, look, we don't even want to mess with that accounting, and that's fine. The next question goes to what Mr. Walter said was a parking space, which I believe I heard him say was eight and a half by 18. Wait, there's more. I never ask any question unless there's a Ginsu attached to it.
That's correct. Our off-street parking standard for a head-in space is a minimum eight and a half by 18 feet.
That's head-in. What about parallel parking?
Parallel parking is, I believe, eight and a half by 20. Yeah.
So we're letting this homeowner create the appearance of a legal parking space that will not be a legal parking space, that is, the gap between his driveways. So a neighbor, a visitor to one of the restaurants overflow to WB because the semi's in the way and they want to park and go shopping, because he's got great soda pop sales sometimes, would potentially park there, and it would not be a legal parking spot. And code enforcement could drive by and slap a ticket on it because it's too big, or the car's too big for the space.
The dimensional standard that I mentioned is specific to off-street parking spaces. We don't have a, we don't have a requirement to provide a spacing between...
Driveways.
Well, garages in this case. So in essence, we don't have an authority to require, require that. To the extent that it's a nuisance for someone who's blocking the driveway there, then it does become a code enforcement situation. One possibility is to, when, at the time that the street improvements go in, potentially, we can provide some kind of driveway consolidation, but it would have to be in the right-of-way in order to not, to provide more on-street parking.
Driveway consolidation, not for this property? You're talking about in, on the street itself?
No, I'm concerned about the gap between the two driveways in front of the person's house, that conceivably somebody, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
14 feet.
Well, I'm...
Mike, you have driveways that don't exactly, or that, that...
Mike, you have driveways that don't exactly, or that create off-street parking spaces that don't exactly meet whatever our standard is. It happens all the time.
Right. I guess, my concern is, not necessarily directly associated with the code, but I'm trying to tie it into the code, so it's relevant. And that is, potentially you've got a hostile neighborhood situation here, and somebody decides that they're going to park in that fourteen-foot spot who isn't a resident, and the city ends up getting phone calls. "They're blocking my driveway." They're, it, it's, it's the equivalent to me, at this point, of an attractive nuisance. You've created what appears to be a parking spot, and if a compact park's there, that's fine, because there's lots of room on each side. But, if my, you know, suburban park's there, and with my trailer hitch sticking out, you know, it, you know, are we going to be enforcing the fact that, you know, it appears to be a parking spot when it technically isn't? Because it's in the right-of-way. So, it's our responsibility, not the homeowner's.
That's a lot of conjecture, and it happens all over in the city. It's, what our criteria is that he provides so many spaces off, off the street, he's done that.
Okay.
So, all these other issues that you're bringing up are important to the neighborhood, but they're not part of our review for a duplex.
But, they are if the duplex, if the duplex impacts the public right-of-way in a negative way, then it is part of our purview.
I think what Dan was saying is that our code requires two parking spaces per each side of the duplex onsite.
Mm-hmm.
It does not require any off-site parking, and so for us to require that, or to be discussing it, is really outside of the particular criteria for this land use approval.
Because he's not required.
Well--
Yes, that's the code. Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand that. And, but what I'm saying is, and I have, you know, frankly, I'm sorry, Ms. Luce, but what somebody uses their garage for is their own business. My, my concern is not, provided it's not a factory, but, but my, my concern is that we've now said, "Okay, you've got two garages, that's fine, you've got two off-street parking." And, but, they get a visitor, the neighbors have a party, and that gap isn't big enough, but it looks big enough, just like you see all over the city, where there's room for four cars, or three cars, but that fourth car squeezes in, and then you get the phone call, you get the nasty note, you get neighbors upset with each other.
Since our code doesn't cover that right now, I think that could be something that you would look at in the future, but it really wouldn't apply to this particular land use application?
A code, a code amendment for the future.
Put a stripe on the street, just make that no parking.
Why are we requiring him to do it?
Requiring--
Well, the, the other part of the paving is access is garage and all that. I mean, that's most of it.
Essentially driveway.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, I'll, I'll relax a little bit.
Okay, now, back to the criteria. We, we need to address the appeal criteria as we go forward. So, Commissioner Neely.
I just want to make sure there's no requirement for off-site parking.
No. No, it's onsite that is the requirement.
That's correct.
Okay, for the question--
And the two garages make that onsite, no matter how that garage is being used.
We don't regulate how people use their garages.
No, I understand that.
Right, the two, the two garages meets the criteria of the code for this particular land use application.
I'm going to ask a question, if I might. It doesn't, I'll tell you what, I've been asked some questions after we've made our decision, because I don't think there's anything in the code that's being violated here.
Their code is--
But, I do want to, I do want to agree a couple of comments after we make, have, make the decision.
Okay, yeah, let's date to the record currently. Commissioner West.
Can I make a motion?
You may.
Well, I move approval of AP 08-05, the P--
You're approving the appeal, which denies the land use application.
Whoops, okay, then I'm not approving.
You affirm. Look at the motion on the green screen. It says, "Affirm the community development director's decision."
Oh, sorry. I affirm the community developments--
I move to affirm.
I move to affirm the community development director's decision dated September 19th to approve with conditions the revised site plan and design review application identified as SP 08 and 04, and deny the appeal A 08-05.
It's been moved by Commissioner West, second of my Commissioner Tidwell. Is there further comment or discussion? Hearing none? Oh, Commissioner Mayby?
Goes back to the zoning, it's MUC 1. How deep, I mean, MUC is basically for Mulhalla. I mean, the Mulhalla corridor, the Seventh Street corridor--
Yeah, we have some on Beaver Creek also.
It goes, it goes to Myrtle Creek only. Myrtle Creek.
Wow.
Myrtle, Myrtle Street only, right? From Mulhalla to Myrtle Street, that one block.
That's correct.
Yes, yes.
So, so that, just to understand, so somebody could build a store on Myrtle Street? Or, is it to the middle of the street? Is it just to the property line? Is it, I'm just not--
But, does the zoning permit?
The, yeah, someone could build a small retail store on Myrtle Street, under the setback allowances of that zone.
Okay. And, just for clarity, mixed-use commercial, MUC, has no minimum lot size, so a fifty-by-forty, which would no way allow somebody to build a house in a residential area, is perfectly reasonable for somebody to build a house in because of the zone they're in.
Correct. And the reason we have this zoning along our major corridors is based on this theory that if you get higher densities on your corridor--
Mm-hmm.
You can support your bus line and things like that.
Sure. And I don't have a problem at all with the series of houses and, or series of buildings with houses on top and all that. I mean, residences on top, I guess you don't want houses on. It just seems like you go very quickly residential. I mean, like, twenty-five feet from Mulhalla, pretty much all the way up Mulhalla, you become residential. And, but, it's the zone, so I'll--
It is, much in our code.
Yeah.
Is there further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Okay, let's get back to the discussion then on possible code issues. Commissioner Neely.
So, just, just real quick for the record, that means the appeal fails and the land use decision continues.
Yes.
You can build your duplex.
Yes, thank you for the clarification, if it was needed. Thank you, Commissioner Neely.
Yeah, and I think this is probably coming to Commissioner Mayby's concern. It seems to me the mixed-use commercial is being used as infill for residential in this case. It's not meeting the kinds of notions we had for a mixed-use commercial. His, his notion of, "You can have a penthouse on top, so that's okay." But, his, his concept of residential on top, commercial on the bottom, you may have some commercial within, you know, between commercial buildings. But, the point is, on Myrtle Street, there's probably not going to be any retail, and this, this is a process of really getting residential infill into an area that's probably going to only be residential. And I think we'd need to have some kind of mechanism to, to deal with that particular issue. Because otherwise, we would have, I mean, this was going, this is infill in a residential area, we would have the necessary setbacks and so forth, and, which we don't here. And, it is one thing I think we need to look at, and I hope--
We need to draw a thin pen rather than a thick pen. We've been caught on that a few times with waterways and all that.
Well, this street particularly, because of its location, has, has issues which will obviously be ongoing. So, if there are, if there are changes in the code that we can make to ease that, or--
Not, not for this street only.
No, no, there are others--
Yeah.
Along the way, but again, if livability is our major criteria, we certainly want to address that. So, are we ready then to move on to the next one? Thank you. This is also an appeal. This is AP 08-04, clear wire appeal of planning commission denial of a conditional use permit CU 08-04. And, the, this is not a land use hearing, this is just a legislative hearing this evening, but is an, is an appeal, and--
Mayor Norris?
It is a quasi, is a quasi-judicial land use hearing as well?
Yes.
Okay, so the same rules will apply to this as applied to the previous one, and our code, and municipal, and the state statute apply to that. So, would you, would you like to lead us through bias and other questions?
Certainly, Mayor Norris and members of the commission, I'm going to quickly repeat the statutory warnings, even though they're set for the, the other hearing. But, the, the applicable criteria were provided in a staff report that was made available seven days before the hearing. Let me know if you'd like me to read those. All testimony, argument, and evidence should be directed towards the criteria, or the other criteria in the plan or land use regulations that you believe apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. And, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission or to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. With that, are there any ex-party contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest that the commission would like to declare?
This is my neighborhood, and I actually just, I didn't see if my husband signed the petition or not. Do you know if he did? Okay. He did not. So, therefore, I'm clean. I forgot to look.
Well, even if he didn't sign, you weren't aware of it, therefore, you weren't ex-party.
You're right.
Any, any challenges to bias or ex-party contacts? Seeing none?
All right, thank you. We will proceed then, and we will use the same format that we did previously with ten minutes for the reports, and five, three minutes for staff, five minutes for neighborhood association. Mr. Conkle, would you please proceed?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'll be presenting the staff report tonight. The applicant has requested a conditional use permit for the replacement of an existing thirty-foot-tall PGE pole located in the right-of-way of Park Drive and Cherry Avenue with a fifty-four-foot-tall replacement utility pole with an antenna cell-- Yes, sir.
It's replacing a thirty-four-foot utility pole. You said thirty-foot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because one of the issues is, are we within height, so?
It's a thirty-four, thirty-four-foot-tall existing pole can be replaced up to a fifty-four-foot-tall pole. The planning commission did review the conditional use application, and they did deny it by a four-to-zero vote, and they found that two of the conditional use approval criteria were not met by the applicant. In the staff report presented by staff in your application, one of the issues brought up was whether the criteria of the conditional use permit are even applicable. We believe, based on Oregon City Municipal Code 1780.06OB, which is in our communication facilities section of our code, it specifically states that a conditional use permit for the co-location of antennas on an existing utility pole is required if the property is zoned, and it, the, the previous section were certain permissive areas. The R10 zone was, was not one of those permissive areas, thereby that conditional use application is required for what is being proposed by the applicant at this location. The two criteria that we're being focusing on tonight, and are part of the appeal that should be addressed by folks, is 1756-01082, where it states that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use, considering size, shape, location, topography, existing of improvements, and natural features. What the planning commission found is they focused on the characteristics of the site, and they considered what was around where this proposed, extension of the utility poles being proposed. It is located on the corner of, of the intersection. What they looked at was that there were no natural features around this in terms of vegetation, trees, that would provide any type of screening in close proximity. The extension of this pole would become the dominant feature at this location, surrounded by single-family, single resident, or, single-story homes, as well as the remainder of the poles, utility poles along that site are thirty-four-foot tall as well. The planning commission looked at, when considering what is suitable, the aesthetic impacts from the extension of this pole on the existing neighborhood. They also relied on the purpose statement when they were making their decision on the conditional use approval criteria. And, one of the purpose statements states that "The encouraged careful consideration of topography, greenways, and historical significance of potential telecommunications sites and the use of camouflaging and screening to ensure development has minimal impacts on the community's views and historic areas." Based, utilizing that purpose statement and applying it to the approval criteria, they did find that there were impacts, and that they, that they were negative impacts on the, on the, on the character of the existing neighborhood. The planning commission also was looking at, as part of the approval criteria, is the existence of improvements for this site to go in. And, I'm sorry, that was funny.
I had no idea what I was doing.
Yeah, that was what I was looking at, I'm sorry.
Napkin in my mouth, so, sorry.
You were very serious about it, though.
I was.
You were very into it.
Well, I was so tentatively listening to you with napkins, so, okay, sorry, Tony.
All right. Perhaps I should've asked if we need to--
So, to getting back to the existence of improvements, and what the planning commission was looking for was if there was any type of an alternative analysis that would, that would consider if there are the existence of other improvements in the area, such as a, other utility poles, higher utility poles, that would, that would be more appropriate, or there's an exist, there's a new cell tower being built on Lynn Avenue. Could co-location occur there, and in combination with other sites in the neighborhood that would, that would serve, that would be more appropriate? The applicant did not submit an alternative analysis. They do contend that it's not required. We don't disagree that it's not required, but the planning commission was looking at that to try and determine if there were, if there were the existence of improvements in the neighborhood that would accommodate this as a better location. The planning commission also found that the photo simulation submitted by the applicant was not accurate, and since they were not accurate, the, the planning commission was not able to fully evaluate the visual impacts created by the proposal on the existing neighborhood and the characteristics of that neighborhood, thereby impacting the aesthetics in that neighborhood. The second criteria that the commission found had not been met is the conditional use permit approval criteria A4. And what it states is that "The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying district." And what the planning commission found was that the proposed facility would become the dominant visual feature in the neighborhood, due to the extended height and slight increase in diameter of the, of the proposed pole, and it would alter the visual character of the adjacent homes in a way that reduces neighborhood livability within the residential neighborhood, and the residential neighborhood is the primary use in the underlying zone. Staff, staff is recommending that the plan, that the city commission uphold the planning commission's denial of the appeal. We, the, really, the three issues that the commission needs to, to, to address is, the first one is, is a conditional use permit required? We believe in our code, it is spelled out that the conditional use criteria are applicable and are required, that they need to be met through this extension of this utility pole with the communication facility on top. And then, the other two are to focus on the approval criteria for the conditional use A2 and A4 concerning the characteristics of the site, and if they're suitable for the proposed use, and that the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use, uses of the surrounding property. If the commission finds that the planning commission erred on all the issues that I have just, I've just gone through in my presentation, and they are, and they are recommending, or finding that the commission erred and they are going to approve the appeal, we have included four conditions of approval that we would recommend attaching if you do decide to approve this appeal. With that, I'd conclude my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, I do have a question to clarify the conditional use permit. We have to also clarify that necessity, as well as look at the, the four conditions, or the two conditional use criteria that they used to deny it?
Those, those, those two--
You said-- Okay, oh, go ahead. Clarify.
The, the two conditional use criteria are what the planning commission--
Right, I understand.
--used to define.
Right, I understand.
So those are what were appealed. Those are the only things that we're discussing tonight. There were kind of, there were three things, three reasons that the planning commission found to deny based under A2.
Yes.
And there was one reason that they used to deny under A4.
Yes, but you also, I thought I heard you say that we also needed to determine whether a conditional use permit was necessary.
Correct.
And we do not?
Unless you believe that our code isn't stating that, I don't see that, I don't see that as an issue here.
Okay.
It was just brought up by the appellant.
Right.
We don't think it has any, we disagree with what the appellant's saying.
So that is not one of the approval criteria?
It was...
It is not one of the approval criteria that the planning commission relied on. However, the appellant has said that conditional use review should not be required in this case, and you can listen to the condition.
So that is part of the...
So the sort of threshold question is, do you agree with the appellant that the planning commission was wrong to look to conditional use? And if you do agree with them, then, you know, it's a simpler case.
That becomes easier.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you very much for the clarification. All right, shall we open the public hearing? Commissioner Neely?
This is, this is attachment, I don't know if it's, yeah, it's on page 121 of the packet. We've got a map there, and I presume that map is indicating the service range where the 54-foot utility pole permitted. Is that correct?
This was submitted by a neighbor.
Oh, okay.
This was, this was just showing the approved tower at the church on Lynn. 121 of the packet. And they just overlaid a one-mile radius on it.
Oh, okay.
It was...
So this was nothing from the applicant?
Correct.
Okay.
With that, are we ready for the public hearing? All right, I will open the public hearing and ask the appellant to come forward, please, and introduce yourself, 10 minutes then to present your case. We should have lights going on here. Are we using the timer this evening? I haven't seen it yet used tonight, so...
It hasn't been beeping.
Must not be working. The green light is not on.
I'll check it.
Okay, but please proceed. We'll worry about that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Mike Connors with the law firm Davis Wright Tremaine here on behalf of the appellant, and I live in the city of Portland. Although the focus of tonight is on this specific application, I think there's a much broader policy issue that's before you. And it's our contention, for reasons that I'm going to get into in detail, that if you adopt the planning commission's decision in this case, you're going to significantly undermine policies that this commission itself has adopted with respect to the regulation of communication facilities. You adopted Chapter 1780, specifically setting forth regulations that govern what are the requirements for a communications facility. One of those key central themes is the encouragement of co-location. And one of the options under co-location is to use existing utility poles with the allowance for a replacement utility pole with an additional height up to 20 feet. And the reason for that requirement is because if you've got your power equipment that's on the pole already, you've got to provide sufficient separation in order that the communications equipment, antennas, et cetera, aren't going to be conflicting with the existing equipment that the utility company already has up there. Just about every utility pole co-location that you're going to see is going to require some increase in height. So in Chapter 1780, you specifically said, "We want to see co-location." Great policy. You don't want to see new facilities going up, so you want to encourage applicants to use co-location options. One of those is this replacement mechanism. That's exactly what my client did. They followed strictly with your Code 1780, went with the co-location, identified the area that they needed to fill, actually started off by looking at commercial building options, those kind of things. None of them are available. Came down to a particular pole in this case, which is at the center of our coverage area, which was indicated earlier is about a mile, it's a little bit less than what you typically see with, say, cellular-type phone companies because we operate at a different frequency and there's a higher level of data involved. The power that we're proposing is 54 feet. That's well under the 75-foot maximum height allowed in residential zones for any kind of communication facility. And there's a, there's a little bit of confusion here that I want to make sure that I'm clear on, because this is key as to what is the policy dilemma that you're dealing with. It is not our contention that the conditional use criteria is irrelevant or non-applicable. That's not, that's not the position that we're taking. In 1780, it clearly says certain zones require a conditional use permit. R10 is one of those zones. The question is, what happens if there's a conflict between what the Chapter 1780 provisions say and what the conditional use criteria provide? And in this case, you specifically adopted as part of 1780 that if there is that conflict, Chapter 1780 regulations control. That's specifically in your code. What the planning commission did is, like staff, they found we complied to the letter with each and every one of the Chapter 1780 requirements. But they nonetheless concluded that we failed to satisfy two of the conditional use criteria. But the grounds that they, that they relied on for purposes of concluding that we didn't meet that criteria are issues that are specifically addressed in 1780. Main one is this is a residential neighborhood and this is going to have an impact on residents in that area. Well, this commission already decided as a policy decision that you were going to allow these facilities in residential neighborhoods. The other key issue is the increase in height. The height and the impacts associated with it, again, that's a policy that this commission has already elected, that in part of encouraging co-location and understanding if you're going to use utility poles, you're going to need to provide some additional height, you already allowed that and set the standards that applicants have to deal with. No greater than 20 feet taller than the existing pole and no greater than a 75-foot overall height. And what the planning commission did was essentially ignore those, use those very bases that you adopted as part of 1780, and found them to be non-compliant here under the conditional use criteria. And in addition to that, they imposed additional requirements that aren't even in either Section 1780 or 1756. So our position is that the planning commission's decision is flawed because the conditional use, the basis under the conditional criteria that they're relying on, number one, directly conflict with the provisions in 1780. As I indicated earlier, you've already stated that if there's a conflict, Chapter 1780 regulations control. They're the more specific regulations that apply here. Conditional use, they apply generally to every conditional use in any zone. And the second thing is the planning commission imposed requirements that are not recognized either in Chapter 1780 or Chapter 1756. That's our position. Not that conditional use is inapplicable, but that to the extent there's a conflict, you have to give 1780 the control. So let me get in quickly to the specific bases for the denial and why we think that the planning commission erred. First, the planning commission concluded that we failed to comply with 1756-01082, which is that you have to demonstrate that the site is suitable for the proposed use. And we broke it down to really four grounds that they relied on. I'm going to go through those four grounds and explain to you why we think it was an error for them to conclude that we failed to comply. First one was they said size. This is too tall of a facility. And that that was, as a result of that, because the surrounding utility poles weren't as tall, this particular site was unsuitable. Again, as I indicated before, you've already set the regulations. 20-feet height increase for the replacement pole, we meet that. Under 75 feet, we meet that. The idea that a increase in height to a utility pole resulting in it being taller than any of the other adjacent utility poles being adopted as a basis for denial means that you have effectively written this utility pole co-location completely out of your code. I don't think that that's a policy you want to adopt, and it specifically conflicts with the policies that you've already adopted in 1780. And to the extent that you would want to adopt a new policy, that's a policy you have to adopt through an amendment. It doesn't apply in this particular application. The second issue was lack of screening trees. I want to make sure you understand, if you look at the photo simulations in the record, there are extensive trees in this surrounding area, some upwards of 60, 70 feet. The issue that the planning commission had was in the immediate vicinity, directly adjacent to the utility pole, they were saying that because there were no surrounding trees there. Well, a couple of problems with that. Number one, your code doesn't require screening trees. It does in Chapter 1780 specifically require an applicant to mitigate the visual impacts, and it provides specific things that you need to do. We've done all those. It doesn't include screening trees. The second problem, practically speaking, is the utility company is not going to want to have trees that are directly adjacent to their poles. That creates conflicts with the power lines, that creates problems for them. You're never going to find that. I mean, keep in mind that this is, this is right-of-way that we're talking about. And the planning commission is asking you to adopt a decision that effectively would require precedent for every other applicant to find a site that has specific screening trees or provide them as part of that. Again, that's going to effectively undermine that policy allowing for co-location. The next issue was that the surrounding uses are residential. Again, you've already determined that these kind of facilities are allowed in residential areas. This is a residential area, the fact that there are surrounding residents should not be a basis for denying an application. Fourth issue was the alternative sites analysis. First of all, it's important to know that we did look at other sites. There was a church that was identified that were, existing towers being proposed on Lynn Avenue, I think it was. We evaluated that, ruled that out. Staff report acknowledged that, and the written staff report looked at that, we addressed that. We also looked at some of the other alternative utility poles that the staff and members of the neighborhood asked us to look at. None of those are going to work. It's going to take us outside of our coverage area. But there's more fundamental problem, and that is that your code doesn't require alternative sites. And in this case, the planning commission is not asking us to provide, look for one alternative site. They're saying if you can meet your coverage needs with three or, two or three different sites, then that's what you're going to have to do. Again, they're asking if you adopt their decision, you're adopting a policy that will make an applicant that's proposing a co-location, go out there and demonstrate that they can't by citing on two or three other sites meet their same coverage requirement. That's the policy you wanted to adopt? I presume it'd be in the code, and it's not. And in this case, the, you know, the concern that my client has is that they attempted to do that, looked at a couple of them, they couldn't work, and now they're still being asked to go do more. Well, if we do that, what's the result? That means we abandon this application, we file a new application, and just look at the Neighborhood Association letter. They said, "We are dead set against any facility anywhere in our neighborhood. It's not this particular location. We'll be back before you with any of these alternative sites." So the question that you really have before you, since I'm running out of time here, is you've already set a policy, allowed a residential use, encourage co-location, you've set the limits of co-location, you haven't required screening or alternative sites analysis. I'll just wrap it up real quickly.
Thank you.
So if you adopt the planning commission decision, you are effectively turning those policies completely upside down and requiring that an applicant basically live under the planning commission's rules set forth in his decision as opposed to the policies you set forth in Chapter 1780. And so with that, that concludes my initial presentation. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Thank you.
There'll be more after.
Yeah, there'll be more later. We'll move on. Those two have, the applicant's opportunity is now, for 10 minutes? They're the applicant, they're the appellant.
Yes.
You're both. Okay. Now, we can, the Rivercrest Neighborhood Association? Diane McKnight?
My name is Diane McKnight, and I reside in from Oregon City. I am also the chairman of the Rivercrest Neighborhood Association, and I don't have a lot of technical information. All I have is the gut feeling of the neighbors. And I really believe that that's something that should be considered. When the application by Clearwire to locate their communication facility in our neighborhood was submitted to the planning department, I and myself and two other members of the steering committee canvassed practically the entire neighborhood, and we found that the consensus was nobody wanted to have that tower at that particular location. And the reasons for opposing the application varied, of course. Some resented the changing of the residential visual appeal of the neighborhood, while others feared the approval of the application would open the neighborhood to further commercial endeavors. Others feared that it would set a dangerous precedent for allowing cell towers in residential neighborhoods, which I understand now is supposedly appro, it's something that is written into the code. However, I don't, the most important, or I guess the most common reason that the neighbors gave was the possible and yet unknown health issues that the facilities may present. And that, that was the, that was the major, the major concern of the neighbors. Anyway, we are respectfully, respectfully asking that you, the fellow, you, the commissioners, whom we rely on to make decisions that are in the best interest of the residents of this city, to consider the wishes of the Rivercrest Neighborhood Association residents and to honor the decision of the Oregon City Planning Department and the planning commission in denying the appeal by Clearwire. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next, I just have one comment card. Are there any others? Vern Butolf.
Vern Butolf, Oregon City. I also have a copy of the code. I live within a block of where the proposed pole is supposed to go up. The first three letters, first three words of this 1780-10 says promote maximum utilization. They're talking about existing poles. I heard the attorney say something about he did check with the Evangelical Church on Lynn Avenue, which the planning commission give permission to put up a 75-foot pole. This pole is within less than a half a mile from where they want to put up the pole on Park Drive and Cherry. And my thought is that if their signal is that weak where they have to have a pole up every half a mile through the city of Oregon City, it's going to look like a jungle out there. Because they not only hang apparatus from the pole itself, they have to have another unit near or on the ground. So it's not only what you see up in the air, it's what you see from the street at eye level. And I don't know, this has been addressed, there's also a lot of existing poles in Oregon City that is actually on the city of Oregon City's property. And I'm talking about with the city shops, as for example. We feel that these poles should be in a commercial-type area, not in a residential area. That's my basic argument. But I hate to see the city of Oregon City grant these cell people, put up these poles all the way through a residential area. I think the planning commission was prudent and decisive, and I think they were right. They were only enforcing the code. The first, the first four under 1780-10 list four of them, and every one of them, I don't think Clearwire has addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's come to testify? All right, then, there's an opportunity for the applicant to rebut.
Thank you for the record again. Mike Connors here on behalf of the appellant applicant. Just want to address a couple of issues. First of all, you heard from a couple of the neighbors and you see in their writing, really the issue that they have is they don't want one of these facilities in a residential area. And while I respect that and that everyone can have their opinion on that, again, that goes back to the fact, that's a policy issue. That's a policy issue that this commission already decided, and it's already determined that these type of facilities in a residential area are allowed. And I want to emphasize that. That includes citing a brand-new tower. It's allowed. In this case, I understand that the increase in height is not something that the neighbors like, but at least it's a co-location option. And it's an option that, you know, minimizes the visual impact by adding some height to an existing pole that's already there as opposed to creating a new pole. New pole would be allowed as conditional use in the residential area. So again, I respect that difference, but I think it's a policy issue and this commission's already decided it. Mr. Utolf, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly, I apologize if I'm not, but he noted the fact that the church that we looked at is a half-mile away. But if you look at the maps that we provided in the record, the propagation maps, we show very clearly the service area that we're looking at, and it is a mile... very clearly the service area that we're looking at, and it is a mile radius. And so if you're going to, and we're dead in the center, you take us a half-mile outside of that, we're losing significant coverage there. That's the importance of this particular site. It's centrally located in the sector where we have a gap, and we want to make sure that we can service that gap. Moving out a half-mile is the reason that we ruled that side out. Another issue that was raised dealt with the health effects. Couple of points on that. First of all, it's not something in your code that you're required to look at. In fact, there's a reason for that, and that is that federal law under the Federal Telecommunications Act prohibits local governments from looking at health effects. And a lot of people hear that and say, "Well, that doesn't make sense." But the reason for that is twofold. One is that they want to make sure that there are uniform standards. We've got federal law that controls these particular providers that go out in the various states and communities. FCC wants to make sure that each community is not adopting their own health standard and thereby having sort of a patchwork of regulation rather than a uniform regulation. And the second reason is, it's a very complicated technical issue. And it's something that the FCC determined, that they went through a multiple-year study, came up with the standards that they adopted based on extensive expert research and testimony of both sides of the issue. What they didn't want to do is put a body like yourself in that position that may not have that expertise, that doesn't have the aid of experts here out in the audience trying to make that decision. That's why there's a uniform standard, that's why it prohibits local governments from looking, from even considering that. With that being said, just to make sure that people aren't concerned, in the record, we've addressed what the FCC standard is and what kind of radiation is going to come from this facility. This facility will be 0.39% of the maximum allowed, less than 1%. So it is well, 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 well below the FCC-recognized health standard for these kind of facilities. So granted, it's not a relevant approval criteria, but we like to provide that information so that people will at least have some sense of comfort. And then lastly, one thing I did want to mention that was raised earlier about the photo simulations. I didn't have time or forgot to address that in my initial presentation. Staff has indicated that the Planning Commission determined that the photo simulations were inaccurate. And on that basis, that's something that we haven't addressed. I think it's important for you to understand that that issue came up in the deliberations. Record was closed, isn't on the record proceeding, we didn't even have an opportunity to respond to that. And if you look at the decision, the Planning Commission doesn't explain why or on what basis they think they're inaccurate. I mean, Clearwire does these kind of photo simulations in just about every application. They know how to do this, we stand by the product that we provided, and there's no evidence in the record. All we have is deliberations of the inaccuracy or an opposing photo simulation or something along those lines. But irrespective of that, there's not been an explanation as to why that's relevant. Again, we got the criteria under 1780, nobody disputes the fact that we meet those to a T, not staff, not the Planning Commission, all of those. The question is, if you meet those, can you use a conditional use criteria to deny it, irrespective of that, when you have a code provision that says in the event of a conflict, 1780 controls? So with that, that concludes my rebuttal, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. I have a question. Besides the height, how does this pole differ from the, how will the replacement pole differ from the original pole?
The only other additional difference is it will be slightly wider, about two inches in diameter greater than the existing pole. And the reason for that is because with the additional height, weight, you structurally have to make sure you have that base. So it will be slightly wider, but it's minimal. And then other than that, it's pretty much, well, there'll be the antennas and equipment on the pole. But other than that, it's a standard wooden pole. It's going to be, look like the other poles. The equipment per your code is going to be painted brown to blend in with the surrounding pole and equipment out there. So it's the height and additional diameter and then the antenna and equipment on the pole.
Commissioner Neely.
Not of him.
Do you have questions for him, or shall we go into discussion?
I'm asking.
Oh.
Go ahead, Nasa. Well, you, since you brought up the issue of your simulations being put forward by the Planning Commission, they didn't respond to it. Was their discussion based on Exhibit F, which is on our page 90?
It must be, yeah.
The answer is, from Mr. Cockle, is that the answer is yes.
Yes.
I did some calibration, and actually, I did the calibration based upon what Commissioner Mayby pointed out to me, that I think he felt that that additional height in the after is less than the claimed 20 feet than the before, and I did some calibration, and I agree with him. I'm going to assume that's the Planning Commission's basis of the decision. My guess is that difference in height is roughly 12 feet as opposed to 20 feet. And so that's sort of, that's sort of, I mean, if somebody's making a judgment as to whether it fits the locality or not, and you presented a picture, I would think that picture should be accurate in terms of saying, yes, it does fit the location. So I'm assuming that that's the issue, and since they didn't say why, I'll say it looks more like 12 feet than it does for 20. But that's sort of beside it. I'll have some questions of our attorney in a minute, but...
Well, can I just respond to that?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I'm not in a position to dispute the specific issue on calculations because I haven't performed the calculations. All I can tell you is, like I said earlier, that my client does these photo simulations on a routine basis. The engineers have indicated to me that this is accurate, we weren't even certain as to what the basis for that was. But let's even assume that you're correct.
I heard that.
The question is, what's the relevancy? Is the submission of an inaccurate photo simulation a basis for denying an application? I would submit no, there's not even a requirement to submit photo simulations. The real question is, with that additional height, does that somehow run afoul of the code? And again, I want to make sure it's clear, assuming you were to approve this facility, my client were to go out and build it, they wouldn't be using this photo simulation as the basis for what they're going to build. They would be using the specific height that we provided to the city, 54 feet. That would be how tall the facility would be. And so we know, regardless of the accuracy of the photo simulations, what is being proposed and what would be built if it's approved. So granted, if it is inaccurate, you know, apologies on my part, obviously, it would have made things easier had it been accurate. I don't know that that's the case or not, but I hear what you're saying on the calculations. But I don't think it changes the fundamental conclusion here, and that is, we meet the criteria, and an inaccurate photo simulation isn't a basis for denying the application.
I have no more questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I ask a question of our attorney now?
Do you have a question for him? Okay, sure, Commissioner Tidwell.
I have a question for our legal counsel.
Okay, let's, you may be dismissed, thank you. I will close the public hearing. Now, I believe we have questions of our attorney. Commissioner Tidwell needs to leave, I'll take him. Thank you.
Please. William, with the testimony that we have from our residents from River Place, River Crest, is there any grounds there to deny this?
I do think that the code does support this. I mean, and what the, they are concerned about is the aesthetic appeals and whether or not it fits in with the neighborhood. And, you know, essentially, if you look at your conditional use criteria, the characteristics of the site are suitable, and the proposed use won't alter the character of the surrounding area. And those are the two pieces that you have. As the applicant says, they don't dispute that conditional use comes into play, the question is whether or not there's a conflict. And ultimately, you know, what they're saying is, you've got a conflict here because the code says, here's the height limit, and therefore, any height limit passes, and if you don't allow that height limit, you're going to, you know, you've undercut your policy. That's not necessarily true, because there may be other residential situations where in fact, you can meet the conditional use criteria and you can meet the height limitations. And so there's not a necessary conflict. It's clear that the code does allow you to consider the conditional use criteria, which do apply to this, and the, I would suggest that you construe it in a way that the codes don't necessarily conflict, that in fact, there could be situations where you have a residential, a tower proposed in a residential area, and you have, you know, full height limitations, and it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, doesn't change the character of the neighborhood, and it is appropriate for the location. So I do think that the Planning Commission's decision was valid, and that, you know, the Neighborhood Association does have, you know, that what they're suggesting is something you can consider. The question for you is, was the Planning Commission right? Are the neighborhood's concerns accurate, or does the, does a proposed higher pole, will it alter the character of the surrounding neighborhood, and are the characteristics of the site suitable?
Commissioner, are you finished? Okay, Commissioner Neely.
Again, to Mr. Kabizman, I, the code there, on the colocation, would it be regarded as colocation is an option available as opposed to a requirement?
Let me make sure I understand your...
Well, we could, I mean, we could have a code that essentially supports colocation.
Yes.
Does that make it a requirement?
No, it does not.
And so, can it be looked at as an option? You can't, we can't permit colocation, but we don't necessarily have to do so. Even without, even without the conditions.
Yes, and what I'm looking for is, you know, I believe colocation and new poles are treated differently. And, you know, that obviously tells you that in fact, new towers are appropriate in the right circumstances.
Okay, so...
He's also asking, are no towers appropriate?
Actually, that wasn't what I was asking, but he can ask that question too. The point is, it seems to me we permitted an option, an option that we can use existing utility poles that have really been put up by a different utility than the one that's being used. Does it require us to do so, or can we? So I'm not sure that our code says, we must colocate. I mean, it seems to me that colocation is an option to us, it's not a requirement.
Right, the code says to encourage colocation in their provision that it's allowed.
But that's not a requirement to us, though.
That is correct.
Okay, it's an encouragement to them, but not necessarily a requirement for us.
Commissioner Mayby?
Well, and the code actually says, you can use a pole that's already there, but you can't go any more than 10 feet higher than it. Or you can put, no, 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 a pole that's already there. You can't go more than 10 feet higher than that. Or you can put in a new pole, as long as the totality isn't more than 20 feet higher than that. To, you know, so that you have the same facilities, the light, the telephone, whatever. And you're going to say something more.
Yes, that's it.
Yes, and I was looking for the standards for putting up a new pole in 1780-100, and there are significant limitations in that, no news, it says, "No new support tower shall be permitted under the provisions of 1780-070 unless the applicant demonstrates the satisfaction of planning manager and the results are verified by state that no existing colocation or modification possibility can accommodate the service needs of the applicant's proposed support tower." Now, that takes us back to 070, which is the construction and modification of a support tower. So there is, there are some limitations on the ability to build new support towers if there is colocation available.
No adjacent parcels, zone for residential use.
It goes on and on.
On and on, yes. Okay, thank you. Any other applicable?
Not that I, Tony, are you...
Do you have any to add?
No, I don't think, unless everybody has additional questions. Do you have more?
No, not on that.
No, it's you.
It's my turn.
Yes, it's your turn.
Well, 17110-D2C, how's that for just pulling out a whole mouthful there? Was that ever addressed in the Planning Commission? Which says specifically, you can't have a tower if it doesn't meet a 25-foot setback from a residential property line.
We do have, I'm sorry, you were saying 1780-110-C?
110-Delta to Charlie. So it's a subset of a subset of a subset.
Yeah, that's not in, he's in the code, which we don't have.
Page 77.
It is there, okay.
Okay, that's, what is setbacks, it's D setbacks. The following setbacks should be part of property lines, not the lease area for support towers. Support towers are a completely different definition. Support towers are a new cell tower. This is colocation on a utility pole.
Okay, good.
Okay, good question. Further?
I guess I'm confused then by C, section C right above it, which refers to colocation, but it says new support towers between 60 and 75 feet, which, you're only 54, but I'm just...
Once again, the definition of support tower doesn't fit the situation that we're in. The definition of a support tower is a structure designed and constructed exclusively to support a wireless communication facility or antenna array, including but not limited to monopoles, lattice towers, guy wires, and self-supporting towers.
That provision is essentially designed that if you're going to put in a new tower, you got to make provision for colocation. That's not what's occurring here. It's...
We specifically tried to separate support towers from existing infrastructure and utility poles.
That's fine, I just wasn't, they seem to conflict with each other under the support tower definition, so. Is there anything in our code that essentially requires us to make them use the Lynn Avenue Tower? Since it's within a certain distance and it's of a certain height?
That was one of the findings of the Planning Commission, based on the A2 conditional use criteria that said the characteristics of sites are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements. Their contention was that an existing cell tower in the vicinity would be an existing improvement that might be able to utilize. Their contention was that...
It's an 80-foot tower, isn't it?
I believe 75. There were additional, I believe about 60-foot tall tower, utility poles along Lynn, Park, along the Park.
Yeah.
I think it's Park Drive.
On Park Avenue alongside the Park.
Correct. Is that an existing improvement that could have been utilized that would have been more appropriate? Those are what, those were some of the issues that the Planning Commission brought up.
Right. It's just been so long, I wanted to kind of go over what it is we are dealing with specifically, because as we've run into many a time, when something's appealed, we can only deal with the specifics of the appeal, not the 75 other pages of documentation.
And I guess I'd also point out, you know, what we did is we kind of layered the amount of review that's required whenever you go through one of these processes, whether it be colocation on a utility pole or on an existing structure or a building. You know, if this were located in, for example, general industrial, campus industrial, industrial, commercial, mixed-use one or two, mixed-use employment, mixed-use downtown, it'd be a site plan and design review, it's type-two staff-level decision. And what the policymakers decided when we were writing this code was that anything other than those zones required additional review to make sure it was compatible, specifically compatible with the neighborhood, regardless of if every criteria was met in terms of the design if it were to go through site plan and design review, because there was concern about existing residential neighborhoods and their impact. So just a little history of when we did write this a couple of years ago.
You were here then.
I was.
I believe that this, that the Planning Commission report is clear, and that I particularly agree with the fact that they're finding that the proposed facility will become the dominant visual feature at this location, knowing that there are other locations, due to the extended height and will alter the visual character for the adjacent homes. And going on to say, that in a way that reduces neighborhood livability. That, to me, resonates with the height, with the additional width of the pole, the fact that there are alternatives in the area. That's the one that I find myself agreeing with and stumbling over. Are there others?
I'm sorry, if I may, just real quick, just to verify. There was discussion about, the Planning Commission brought up in the deliberations about Exhibit F and the height of the pole. That is in the record in a minute, it's on page 142. Commissioner Lejois specifically talked about it. And then the other issue would be that under a conditional use, photo simulations of the final product are required as part of the application.
And I would think so, if we're talking about something in terms of compatibility and we have a picture that's presented to us that doesn't reflect the actual impact, it is a picture of evidence, and I think it can be used as a basis of the denial. and I think it can be used as a basis of the map.
That's Ms. Neely, yeah. Okay, other comments or motions?
I'm going to move to. I'm going to move to deny the appeal.
To affirm the Planning Commission's.
And to affirm the Planning Commission's decision.
Seconded by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there further comment or discussion? All right, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three, one. Are you ready for a break?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break. And an engineering services consultant contract, which is a personal services agreement 5-205. And that's pressure our city engineer, public works director will give us the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a fairly straightforward, basically to renew an existing contract we have with consultants, and they've been providing excellent services. We have not actually had to use the entire amount that we include in the contract, but we have that there should we get busy again. And we find that this provides us some flexibility.
But a change has come.
When the economy turns around. What, so what we use this for is for design review. When sets of drawings come in, we send them out to Kennedy Jenks and they review them for us. This has been really very helpful with us in terms of managing the work level, because, as you know, it's been fairly inconsistent over the last 18 months, and it's really taken a nosedive over the last six months. So we're grateful we have this contract so that they, we don't have to worry about laying people off. And we've also found that we save money with this contract, and we really don't need, we used to have two engineers on staff, and we really don't need that kind of personnel power in these positions any longer.
Mayor, you remember too, that this contract is a result that we actually had this staff at one time, and that we actually found savings by going into a contracting situation.
Okay, so actually, my question was, did we, have we ever used the entire amount?
No, we haven't. We've used anywhere from 31,000 to 60,000 of the contract amount.
Okay.
I think it's important to leave the maximum there and not reduce it though, because again, it gives us quite a bit of flexibility. If a large, if a large project came in, such as the rivers, we might need to use more when.
Good preparation. Okay, are there questions of Nancy? Now, may I have a motion, please? Commissioner West?
Okay, I move to approve a two-year extension for a total not to exceed 160,000 for engineering services and a PSA agreement to Kennedy Jenks Consultants, and I authorize the city manager to execute it.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. Next, we have the changes to design standards for local streets. So Nancy, this must be you also.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Mayor. What we, what we suggested we do when we were adopting the pavement utility, pavement maintenance utility, was that we look at our local street standards and see if we had a slightly thicker structural standard for our local streets, whether or not that could allow us to manage that pavement management program more effectively for local streets. Because as you recall, the majority of our streets are local streets. So if we could construct them in a way that they could provide better service, better surface and longevity, so that we wouldn't have to start the preventative maintenance so early, then we could probably, it would be able, we would end up saving money in the long run. So, we also looked at, and we did a fair amount of research on this, and we looked at Clark County and the City of Vancouver, and we found out that it would be appropriate for us to change our standard. Now, what we require now is three inches of asphalt over 10 inches of aggregate, crushed aggregate rock. And the other thing that we have had developers do for years is just to lay down one and a half inches of asphalt first, and then wait until most of the houses are constructed, thinking that, oh gosh, if we put down the three inches at the beginning, it'll get damaged by concrete trucks, gravel trucks, et cetera. But what we learned from doing further research on this, and kind of wish we had done this a while back, is that the one and a half inch pavement, you actually get more damage to the overall structural section by having that exposed alone for the first 12, for the first 12 months or whatever. So it's really better to lay down the entire asphalt section at the beginning before you start building the lots out. And then there were some little details, like how we describe what the actual specification is for the asphalt. We were using sort of an outdated standard for that. So what we are going to be, what I have approved as our new standard, and I have the wrong date in there, it's effective November 1st, 2008.
Oh, I wondered about why we were waiting a year.
Yeah, we don't want to wait that long.
Oh, okay, good.
But what we'll be requiring is a total of four inches of asphalt over 12 inches of crushed aggregate base, and we'll require them to put the four inches in, into, probably, they'll be installing two two-inch lists of asphalt altogether, rather than waiting. So I think I was mostly wanting to provide you with this so that as a follow-up to when we talked to you when we were doing the utility, the street maintenance fund, that we would be looking at things that could allow us to manage that program more effectively and improve the structural performance of that local street from the, because of the way we constructed it. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that we also are going to require pavement design when we have really crummy clay soils. We don't, and what we're doing is right now, is we're going around to different parts of the city and taking soil samples to determine where we have these. Rather than having to require a bunch of testing every time for, because the ashtray soil classification is a fairly extensive test, what we'll do is we'll try to identify where we think we have those, or maybe we don't have any at all. So we have a much better sense of where we have these clay soils, ashtray classification A7. So that's just a little sidebar, because if you have that bed of a clay soil, this proposed standard probably isn't appropriate, you probably need even a thicker section.
So this is just for discussion purposes this evening, information?
Informational, yes.
I think, I really appreciate very much upgrading our standards and for maximum efficiency and longevity.
I would call this more of a sustainable pavement section.
Right.
Invest a little bit more, but save more in the long run.
Great, Commissioner Neely.
The first one is, in your soil classification, is crummy in fact defined?
No, it's really not. Actually, you have to do a plasticity index test, and you do break the soil, and so it does crumble.
Oh, you said crumbly, I thought you said crummy. Oh, excuse me. All right. You mentioned Clark County and the City of Vancouver. Do we have problems in looking at Clackamas County or Maloma County or Washington County?
I don't think they've gone to the standard. I think we're probably ahead of the game here.
I assume that.
Do you know that for sure?
I can find out.
Oh, I think that would be good to find out. I like it when we're cutting edge.
City of a first. Except, you know, you're attributing, you're attributing stuff to really Hudson's Bay Company area as opposed to, but never mind.
Oh, it's okay. Commissioner West?
Do we have to, or do you have to amend the code to do this?
No.
Commissioner Mayby?
A couple of things. First, is this the standard that the house on Myrtle will have to adhere to?
No, they're going to do more of a grind in a inlay on Myrtle Street.
Second, it just, as a rough look, it appears that this will cost about 25% more than our current, because we're adding another inch of thickness and two inches of gravel. So just with that little bit of math, about 25% more, are we going to get 25% more longevity out of it? Or are we better off covering a lot more road and getting it up to 68 than laying a lot less road to 100?
What I understood from the research that was done was that this would indeed, from a cost-benefit standpoint, this would be beneficial. It would be, you would see a return on your money in the overall lifetime of the road.
So we're going to get more than five additional years of life?
What it'll do is it'll postpone the preventive maintenance, and that's where you'll start saving your maintenance money.
Until you, all the roads are up to the standard, and then you'll be caught up to all your postponings, so.
Well, that would be nice.
Is it going to be in a 25-year cycle now, or instead of a 20-year cycle?
It could be, it could be. A lot of, I've read a little bit of materials about adopting 30-year pavement sections instead of 20. I can't tell you exactly if this is a 25-year pavement section, but it could be.
Could be, or should be, or you expect it to be?
I would say that this is based on the fact that this will extend the preventive maintenance, you'll end up saving money earlier, and because of, depending on what kind of preventative maintenance you end up having to do, I think there's a good chance it will be a 25-year roadway life.
Excellent.
Because my concern is, we're charging the citizens additional money to put more pavement down, but if it just means we put less but thicker, you know, but if we're actually going to get the cost benefit out of it, then the citizen who lives here their entire life will see it as opposed to the come and goer, then.
Right, and this will mostly apply to local streets that are built by developers, and then the city takes those roads over.
Right.
So better yet. But, not that we want to be further burdening a developer either, but I do think that in the long run, we'll end up saving money, especially when you think about long-term maintenance of asphalt materials.
And I assume that 7th Street was not paved to the standard?
Well, 7th Street had a pavement design done. It has a lot more, I think, I can't remember exactly, I think that 7th Street has at least seven inches of asphalt.
It's not a local street.
Yeah, but that had a pavement design done where we tested the subgrade.
Okay, well, that's good.
Traffic loadings and.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Neely?
One of, what I assume is a benefit here is that, you know, you go into these subdivisions, and they're not built out, and you're trying to straddle all these elevated manhole covers, and I guess that disappears.
That'll be the end, that's right.
That will be nice.
No more of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I park on the street.
Thank you for that report. You park in front of a 14-foot space, though?
No, I park in front of the driveway. That's going to make smooth around.
I hope code enforcement hears about this. Okay, next we have the minutes of October 15th, with Commissioner West absent. May I have a motion for adoption, please?
Move approval?
Moved by Commissioner Mayby. Seconded by.
By.
Seventh, she was pulled.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Seconded by Commissioner.
She wasn't here, so she can't.
It has to be you.
What if I don't want to second it?
Then it dies.
Second!
Moved by Commissioner Mayby, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the minutes, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner, Mayor Norris? Commissioner West?
Abstain.
Abstain? Oh, yeah, abstain. And Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three, zero with one abstention. Next, we have the consent agenda, items A, B, C, G, and H. May I have a motion for approval, please?
Move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Mayby. On the consent agenda, Nancy, please, the vote.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. Next, we have two items to pull separately, and first one would be the approved, the Department of State lands lease, 406-28-ML, plus the amendment to 31650-LI. And that was pulled by whom? Commissioner West, I think it was?
Neely.
Neely.
This is which one?
D.
Yes. Actually, just kind of a point of concern, more than anything else, and I think, I think whenever we have a funding source that's general fund that is not specifically indicated that it's budgeted, I think we need to, we shouldn't be in the consent agenda, because unless it's a budgeted item, and that appears not to be the case, it's identified here just as funding source, general fund. So, in general, I think in terms of when we have money issues coming forward, probably should not put it in our consent agenda, the particular ones not budgeted. The other two that have been pulled, I think those are all budgeted, but this one is not.
Or it doesn't indicate that.
Or it doesn't indicate that, it is one of the two.
Is there a staff response to that, or should we just go ahead? Commissioner, or yes, Mr. Archer?
Gosh.
We, well, first of all, it's $275, so it can be absorbed into our, into our adopted budget. I, we're paying for these types of things, the leases and those types of things related to the DSL things, out of an account that we've set up now where it's all, so I, if I'm off-base, Mr. Wimmer can correct me, but I think we can, I think we can absorb that into our adopted budget, so I didn't see that as a concern. I'm the one that wrote that staff report, so I'll accept that responsibility.
Well, in that case, I move to approve agenda item E.
Thank you, second, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. Next, we'll take items E and F together, which are agreements with Oregon City School District and Gladstone and Oregon City Swim Team, and for the Oregon City Swimming Pool. Commissioner West?
Yeah, and this is, I just wanted to, I guess a matter of information or two. Since we took out the starting blocks, or some of the starting blocks, that wouldn't allow any of the teams to host meets at the pool, I was, I had to skim through this to look at the lease terms, and it looks like they're the same as last year, plus 3% for cost of living. So I just wanted to make sure, and I talked to a couple of the coaches from Gladstone and from the Oregon City Swim Team, that they felt this was a fair lease, since their rate was going up, and yet they could do less with it, but they were, sounded pretty good with it. So just a little.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We discussed that with the, with the teams, and they're, they're okay with that.
Okay, with that, would you like to make the motion, please?
Oh, I move approval of E and F, the leases for the O.C. High Gladstone School District and the Oregon City Swim Team.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Mayby. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. That concludes our business agenda, so we'll move into communications first. City Manager, Mr. Patterson? Whoa, can't believe it.
No, we couldn't believe it.
I have a couple of cool things. I brought back for all of you from our dedication of the electrical vehicle charging station, which was wonderful. The staff did a fabulous job of putting that together. And we are the second city in the state to step up to the plate to put in an electric vehicle charging station. At the dedication, yes, at the dedication, I asked how many in the audience had electric cars? There were four. One of them was in process. And we have a local company, actually, that will do your conversion if you wish to do that. But we can actually hold four car, we have spaces for four cars, so you can park there. We need to work on our parking, because we just, it's now in a one-hour parking zone, and it takes four hours to charge your car, but.
But that's how we pay for it, it's the parking ticket revenue.
Exactly. So, staff did a fabulous job of putting this together. We got great publicity on it. Here are the treats that staff put together, M&amp;M's with EV on them. And this actually does a great job of our number one, oops, we don't have it tonight, our number one goal, which is to build a sustainable future, and this definitely sets us up for network. PGE is putting, there will be many, many cities following us. PGE is putting. PGE is putting in a network of charging stations so that electric vehicles can go from one place to the other, because they can go about 35 miles before they'll need recharging. So that was a great thing. Secondly, more treats for you. At the dedication of the new county building, which improves the aesthetics of our community, this was the giveaway, which is, this is another LEED-certified building. They're hoping to build an entire LEED-certified campus. You should stop for a tour, and I think particularly noteworthy is the plaza between the two buildings. There is some fabulous public art on the ground, and you can see it very well from the fourth floor. The views of Mount Hood are stunning, and the waterfall has tables along it so that our city staff could walk over there and have lunch on a sunny day. It's just a wonderful amenity for the community. And, oh, I forgot to bring, I forgot to bring the T-shirt, but students from Gardner Middle School saying that day, and the county had provided T-shirts, which I just think is the coolest slogan. All the kids wore T-shirts saying, "We are so tomorrow." And I abandoned my notes at that point and spoke about that because what a great theme for the 150th birthday of Oregon, which is, this building is part of oh-so-tomorrow. So the county was oh-so-tomorrow, and it was just, I think we should be very pleased to have a second LEED-certified county building practically next door. So hopefully, our building, our new city hall, will also join the trend towards sustainability and become LEED-certified as well.
Our new one or the one we're renovating?
The one that we are moving into. This one may be lost.
Yeah, but you know, you know how much energy that's taken to create the blade that is used to cut the paper?
I think this might be recycled, but the artwork that's in the plaza is called Granite Rug, and it's very interesting. It speaks to the history of the area, and again, it's very cool. So I encourage you all to go see that. Are there any other reports by commissioners this evening? Commissioner Neely.
Yes. Unlike Metro Steering Committee on Urban and Rural Reserves, the Clackamas County PAC has met on a very regular basis. We haven't postponed any of our meetings, and we have had two since the steering committee has met. But we were given a charge, we were actually given a bit of a charge to start drawing on-maps where we thought urban and rural reserve areas ought to be. I generally try to sit at the table with a representative from the Beaver Creek area, and I think that it is more or less imperative that within probably the next couple of months, if you want to have a joint meeting with potentially new people coming on the commission, we have a study session where we actually talk about where Oregon City thinks it should and could expand within, say, the next 50-year period, so that we can talk about what Oregon City might be. I'm not that keen of getting involved in a discussion about other communities and whether they become urban areas or not. I think that's a decision that comes elsewhere. I don't think we can make a statement until we identify what we can serve over the next 40 years. And I really encourage us in the very near future to actually start a discussion at a study session.
I actually would like to make a broader proposal, actually, I think I've been proposing about a year, that we put together a community forum or series of town hall meetings that address those issues of growth in our community. And Metro has used, the last, I don't think any of you have been to those regional meetings. Oh, Dan Drenlaw has, and so has Nancy Crashour and I. The regional meetings that do a very cool thing, you have a handheld computer where you get to vote and have the instantaneous results up on the board, so you could give immediate feedback to what the group thinks. And it's actually a fascinating way of doing community dialogue. And so I hope that when we do goal-setting January, that we can come up with a model, a plan for doing that community outreach, because I think we need to engage not just with our new commissioners, but with the citizens as well. We have not had that discussion, and I think in the light of the failure of our annexations, we need to also talk about what annexing means, what growth means for our city, how we grow, how we wish to grow, and what criteria we're using for that. So I think there's a whole educational piece that we can do with our citizens, and I will get for you the cost of how you use that handheld voting machine, because I think that would be a really useful.
I was just going to mention that Metro's calling this local aspirations, and they're asking for input for all the cities, but they're on a pretty fast track.
Yeah.
They're asking for input as soon as January, so.
They are, however, they'll take it later. We, well, we have told them that that is way too soon for, well, many cities have done visioning already, and many cities are doing the comp plan update. Well, we already did our comp plan update, and I think we could forward those kinds of issues, but I think that for us to talk about issues deeper than that and broader than that, that this would cover it. But most cities are just submitting what their comp plan said or what their visioning process has said for the local aspiration.
The other interesting thing about that vote was that most of the people there, J-PAC and IMPAC members, favored non-expansion of UGB and higher densities, even if it met in existing neighborhoods.
Yes.
Which is a change.
Yes, and that, to me, the leadership favors density, because we believe it'll protect farm and forest land. The general public sees density as something to be shunned. And so I think that's where talking with our citizens about preferences and what we aspire to do and be in, how the community grows and which corridors, et cetera, would really be useful. Because I think there's a disconnect perhaps between leadership and citizens on the density issue. We all have been talking about that. But yeah, the regional meetings have been absolutely amazing to go to. I think they have dealt with very substantive issues, and I think it's changed the course of Metro's determination, actually, a little bit. The next one will be, I think it's Wednesday. Is that right? Yeah.
The reserves?
No, it's the joint IMPAC/JPAC meeting on transportation is next Wednesday.
At the convention.
At the convention center, yeah. We did land use last, two Wednesdays ago, and this will be land use in the last one, be the 22nd, I believe. Then we go into decision-making in December, and we're through. So with that, Commissioner Mayby.
I just want to mention my face looks like this because my doctor was also upset about an infill development when he was doing it.
All right, thanks for that anecdote. Commissioner Mayby.
Yeah, first, one important thing to remember is density means less than Londo Mo. So, but anyway, on a more serious note, the locks, the latest word we got is that nobody wants to do the job for the price the government's willing to pay for it, to repair the.
Oh, surprise.
To repair the, or do the inspection on the lock doors. So what that means is they're now scrambling for more money and trying to change some of the scope of the work, which means more delay before the locks get open, which means we're in more and more danger of celebrating our 150th anniversary by having our locks permanently closed. So we have a new fifth district representative, and we need to get on his radar every minute possible before everybody else gets on his agenda, and keep hammering Congress and the governor and everybody else, because if we don't come up with some money, the locks will probably be locked. Once they're closed, it's going to be virtually impossible to reopen them. So we need to keep hammering on it. We've got a good coalition, you know, PGE's on board, the port is finally starting to talk to us, like, gee, maybe it's a multimodal mode transportation. But, you know, it's slowly but steadily, more and more people are listening, but they're listening locally, and it's a federal project, so we need to get them to listen on the other coast. So keep up the pressure.
Commissioner West.
Yes, I have, just turn my mic here. I have an announcement. Tomorrow night is our first introduction to the public on our Main Street program, and we're having an open house down at the Abernathy Center at 6:30. That's tomorrow night on November 6th. And what we're going to talk about is the three community or civic committees that you could work on if you're interested in helping with our downtown revitalization. One of the committees is promotion, so if you're an event planner at heart, that's a good committee for you to help plan festivals, parades, and events for downtown. Another committee that we'll have, that you could work on is design, and this is where I think I'm going to spend my time, because this will help urban renewal, help the city, and what maybe even make code amendments to like banners, landscaping, lighting, and all kinds of the physical images of what downtown looks like, so to help upgrade it for more business. The other committee, the third one that we're going to work on, is economic restructuring. So if you're someone in Oregon City who has an idea of what kind of business selection or recruitment that you would like to see down there, please join us. So once again, tomorrow night, Abernathy Center, 6:30, and meet all the folks that are working to make Main Street a better place to do business and a fun place to shop.
Thank you.
And eat.
I just remembered, I had one more thing. I went to the Port of Portland's lunch where they gave their annual report, and I know that as we talked about Amtrak stations and improving passenger rails, well, freight rail throughout Oregon, and the legislature's lack of funding, investment in trains, we learned that Union Pacific actually has invested in trains. One of the issues in southern Oregon, particularly with freight coming up from California, is that you put the double-decker, what they call transport trucks on back of trains, but the bridges only take a single-decker. But the bridges are all being retrofitted now, so that, I think the last few are being done this year, so that now we can have that freight. Also, the Union Pacific is going to invest in some double tracks so that passenger rail can go alongside freight rail. So I thought that was one of the most positive things that I had heard, besides the Portland is, the Port of Portland is doing very well. So other reports? We are adjourned.